Hillsborough County has launched its redesigned website, hcfl.gov. The new domain boasts a variety of improvements to searchability, page layout, navigation, and website speed. The revamped website features robust search functions making it easier for users to find the information they need. Whether searching for essential government services, paying water bills, accessing event information, learning how to acquire a new trash can, or identifying evacuation zones, the enhanced search functionality ensures quick access to relevant content. Hcfl.gov's new design features a clean, modern, and intuitive layout. The streamlined design enhances user-friendliness for easy navigation and access to important resources. Navigating the website is now more straightforward than ever. Users can seamlessly move between different sections, departments, and services while interacting with information and resources. Ready to see what all the fuss is about? Head to hcfl.gov and discover your best source for all things Hillsborough County.
Oh man, here comes Arnie again.
Check this out. It's Arnie. What are you doing? You made a mess in my hallway. Hey, Arnie. Looks like you could use a hand. Let me help you.
You don't need superpowers to be a hero. Help make Hillsborough bully-free.
Psst, hey, would you do me a favor? Grab your phone or smart device and open up that camera. Then point it right here at the QR code. Do you have it? Oh, wait a second. When you see the link pop up on your screen, give it a tap. You ready? Boom! Welcome to the Hillsborough County official YouTube channel. We've got all sorts of videos here, all about what makes our community such an awesome place. From local events and community highlights, to what's in the perfect Cuban sandwich. We've got it all. We're always adding new things, so while you're here, be sure to subscribe and hit that notification bell so you'll never miss a new video. Here's that QR code again, just in case you missed it. Go ahead and check it out. This must have fallen out of that video. This really is the perfect Cuban sandwich.
Good afternoon and happy Valentine's Day. I want to welcome everyone to the Board of County Commissioners' Community Investment Tax Workshop. This time, I'm going to pass things over to the county administrator for some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to thank you all for being here today for today's workshop. We are having this workshop today because the board acknowledged that the Community Investment Tax, or CIT, will be expiring at the end of November 2026. And we want to take this opportunity to provide information to you on the collections, the uses, and the options surrounding a renewal. As you are aware, this is a half of a percent sales tax that was approved by the voters in September of 1996, and it's been levied throughout Hillsborough County since December of 1996. It was a 30-year tax. It's estimated that about 20% of the revenues are paid by those visiting Hillsborough County. And you may be asking, why are we discussing renewing a tax when it's still going to be another two and a half years before its expiration? And the main reason is for thoughtful planning purposes. As you'll hear in the presentation today, and that you are already aware, the CIT can only be used for capital purposes, not for operating expenditures. And capital projects are complicated. They require planning and lead time. Our capital improvement budget includes a six-year plan due to the long-term nature of these projects. And also, large capital acquisitions, such as a fire truck, can have a long lead time before its arrival. Today, we're going to outline the statutory requirements involved with the SRTAX and provide a timetable that incorporates all of those requirements. And the timetable will include multiple opportunities for you to hear public comment. You will hear how revenues have been spent throughout Hillsborough County, and how critical capital improvements have been made in the areas of transportation, public works, public safety, parks, recreation, and others. You will also hear that despite all the investments made, there is still much more to be done. We have had explosive growth in Hillsborough County, and our needs continue to grow. CIT has been a crucial component of our funding strategy, and it is prudent for us to continue to plan for the current and future needs of our constituents. Since this is a workshop, there will be no votes taken. This is an opportunity for staff and our municipal partners to provide information, and the board to be able to ask questions and discuss the issues. Greg Horwiddell, Deputy County Administrator, will provide the overview. You will then hear from Mayor Jane Castor from the City of Tampa, Mayor Kilton from the City of Plant City, and Mayor Ross from the City of Temple Terrace. We have various representatives in the audience as well. Chris Farkas, Deputy Supervisor of Operations with the Hillsborough County School District, and Eric Hart, CEO of the Tampa Sports Authority. And now, we can turn it over to Greg for the overview.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and happy Valentine's Day. For the record, I'm Greg Horwiddell, Deputy County Administrator, and as noted by the county administrator, I'm going to provide an overview of the county's Community Investment Tax, also referred to as CIT. As shown on this first slide, the initial CIT was approved by Hillsborough County voters at a special election in September of 1996. The referendum was for a half-cent sales tax levied for 30 years. We are currently in year 28 of the existing CIT, which expires on November 30, 2026. The ballot language referenced a broad and diverse array of project types that could be constructed by the county, the school district, Tampa, Plant City, and Temple Terrace. These categories generally include transportation, public safety, public facilities, and public utilities. We'll hear more about these projects in subsequent slides. The basis for the county CIT program is found in Florida Statute Chapter 212. It governs how much tax is permitted, how the tax may be levied, and the purposes for which it may be levied. Hillsborough County is limited to a half percent, or half a penny, because we also have a half-cent indigent care sales tax. The state limits these types of local option taxes to a combined total of 1%, or one full penny. allowable uses for CIT dollars can be summarized very simply. CIT funds may only be spent on capital items and infrastructure with a useful life of at least five years. No operating costs can be funded with CIT dollars. For example, we can build a fire station and purchase the apparatus, but we cannot pay the salaries of our firefighters and EMTs with CIT dollars. I would also note here that the legislature is considering some changes to the tax code. One of those changes may affect the term and duration of CIT. We'll hear more about that, I'm sure, as the session goes on. Current CIT revenue is allocated per a 1996 inter-local agreement between the county and other recipients of CIT funds. Under the current distribution method, the school district receives 25% of all CIT revenue off the top before other distributions are made. The Tampa Sports Authority also receives approximately $9 million off the top each year to pay for debt service and capital repairs of Raymond James Stadium, which is a county-owned facility. All remaining CIT dollars are allocated per the population-based state-shared half-cent sales tax formula. This means the county receives a slightly more, or a higher percentage than it would under a straightforward population basis. That occurs because there are some capital projects that the county pays for that have a county-wide benefit. The state formula recognizes that reality. This slide shows CIT revenues received by each entity. The amounts shown are through fiscal year 2022. As you can see, Hillsborough County received the largest share of CIT revenues, followed by the school district, Tampa, the sports authority, Plant City, and Temple Terrace in that order. As noted previously, distributions to the county and our municipalities are determined by the state-shared half-cent sales tax formula. Next, we show total CIT expenditures through fiscal year 2022. Approximately $2.3 billion has been spent on capital projects throughout Hillsborough County, including our municipalities. These funds have been spent to address the needs of a rapidly growing population, which is a topic that we'll cover in an upcoming slide. Project categories funded with CIT include transportation, which are road projects, sidewalks, intersection improvements, and stormwater facilities, and bridges; public safety, fire stations, law enforcement vehicles, and the jail; public facilities, parks, libraries, the stadium, and other government buildings; and public utilities, stormwater and water sewer facilities. All of these are in accordance with the eligibility criteria defined in Florida statutes. Please note that the current revenue and expenditure totals don't match exactly because some CIT projects are still ongoing and may take some time to fully expend their CIT allocation. This slide summarizes a wide variety of projects that have enhanced the quality of life for Temple Terrace, Plant City, Tampa, and the unincorporated areas of Hillsborough County. For project descriptions and funding amounts, please visit hcfl.gov/CIT. In this slide, we show the expenditures only for Hillsborough County. These are capital projects authorized by the Board of County Commissioners through fiscal year 2022. One item I'll point out is that the percentage of CIT that the county has spent on transportation projects over the past 28 years, of that $1 billion, the county has used nearly 50% to address the county's transportation needs. The second highest category of expenditures was for public safety. This includes the jail, improvements to the courts, sheriff's vehicles, fire stations, and apparatus. Finally, you may recall that prior boards decided to issue bonds backed by CIT revenue to accelerate construction of capital projects. While projects were accelerated, the practical effect of bonding the CIT revenue stream was that debt service consumed most CIT revenue until 2021. Until recently, this significantly constrained the county's flexibility to address other emerging capital needs. As they say, a picture is worth a thousand words. Over the next two slides, we show several pictures to illustrate the types of projects that CIT has helped fund over the years. I'll point out the fire apparatus and the law enforcement vehicles in the lower right-hand corner of this slide. While these may not be as glamorous as new buildings or a new road, they are an essential part of delivering services to our residents, businesses, and visitors. This slide shows more examples of CIT-funded projects. Although, I'll point out here, Raymond James gets a lot of attention as a CIT project, it retained the Buccaneers and did so with approximately 8.9% of total CIT revenue. Other projects include major road extensions, the Tournament Sportsplex, the Zoo, and Julian B. Lane Riverfront Park, among many others. Since 1996, Hillsborough County has grown, on average, by about 23,000 residents per year. Today, we have approximately 1.5 million people who live in Hillsborough County. There are many thousands more each year who travel into the county for work or for leisure. From 1996 through 2023, the county's total population increased by nearly 70%. The largest share of this growth, 83%, occurred in the county's unincorporated portion. Plant City grew by 56% during this time. Tampa and Temple Terrace each grew by 40%. I'll point out that the orange bars on the population chart are estimates of future growth. If these estimates hold true, by 2050, Hillsborough County and our cities will have an additional 475,000 people living here, for an estimated total of approximately 2 million residents. This represents a nearly 32% increase over today's population. Other points of interest are the increases in call volume for Hillsborough County Fire Rescue and the Sheriff's Office. While the data timelines are different, the trend is the same. Calls for service have risen exponentially in the last decade. More calls mean a greater need for capital facilities and vehicles. And remember, CIT dollars cannot be used to pay for personnel or other operating expenses, as those would require a different funding source like property taxes. Lastly, one interesting observation on this slide is that while the road miles in the unincorporated county have not kept pace with population growth, while the county spent about 50% of CIT dollars on transportation, the need to replace and repair aging infrastructure only increases with each passing year. Looking forward to meeting the needs of our growing population, we have identified capital needs in four categories. Transportation and public works, such as road resurfacing, sidewalks, intersection improvements; public safety, such as fire stations and apparatus, law enforcement facilities and vehicles, emergency management; public facilities, community centers, pet resources center, medical examiner complex, sports facilities, and courthouses; and finally, public utilities, septic-to-sewer conversions, water and wastewater treatment facilities, landfill closures, and others. County staff has identified over $10 billion in potential county projects to maintain our current level of service as our population increases. Our municipal partners have similar needs, and you'll hear from them in a few minutes. While some of these capital projects aren't necessarily sexy, they are an essential part of delivering services to our residents, business owners, and visitors. This slide shows the estimated revenue received with the CIT renewal, which would be approximately $200 million per year with an assumed 3% annual increase in revenue. In this first table, we have outlined the estimated revenue if CIT is renewed and allocations stay as they are today. 25% off the top to the school district, approximately $9 million annually to the sports authority, and the balance being distributed to the county and cities based on the state-shaped half-cent sales tax formula. We show the distributions in 10-, 20-, and 30-year increments as examples, so the board can get a sense of the revenue that would be available for capital projects in each jurisdiction. Next, we show what would happen if there were no off-the-top allocations to the school district or the sports authority. As you can see, there are substantial increases in revenue available for each jurisdiction to allocate toward their community's capital needs. If the board authorizes a CIT renewal to be placed on an upcoming ballot, staff will work with our partners to develop an interlocal agreement governing the receipt and use of funds. That agreement would be approved by each jurisdiction and the Board of County Commissioners, just as it is done with the current CIT. If the board wanted to pursue placing CIT renewal on the 2024 ballot, a timeline is outlined on this slide so that you can see the necessary steps to take prior to the general election on November 5. One key difference is the requirement for an OPAGA audit. This step requires 180 days to complete. The results of the OPAGA audit must also be published on the county's website at least 60 days prior to the referendum. The board would need to direct the county attorney's office to prepare an ordinance and identify public hearing dates. Because board action cannot be taken at this workshop, the first realistic board meeting for this to occur is on March 6, 2024. Assuming the board moved forward with the CIT renewal, an ordinance would be presented on April 3. The public hearing and a board vote on the proposed ordinance could take place on April 17. I'll point out the last regularly scheduled board meeting where a vote could occur and still meet the OPAGA audit timeline is May 1. Staff would begin working with the cities immediately following a board vote to place CIT renewal on the ballot. We anticipate bringing a proposed interlocal to the board in July. The remaining steps are for the supervisor of elections to place the item on the ballot, OPAGA to finish their audit, and the county to post the audit results on the county website. After that, it's election day. Finally, with this slide, we wanted to give the board and the community a sense of what other Florida counties have done in establishing their CIT programs. Please note that Florida statutes provides only two options for this type of local option sales tax, either a half cent or a full cent. As a reminder, Hillsborough County is limited to a half-cent option because we already have the half-cent indigent care sales tax. As you can see, four counties levy a full cent, but they limit their term to either 10 or 15 years. Three counties do not allocate CIT revenue to their school districts. Two counties do not allocate any CIT revenue off the top. As the county administrator mentioned during her opening remarks, today, we would like to hear the board's discussion on a CIT renewal. The very first question is whether to pursue a renewal. If yes to pursuing a renewal, the next series of questions is: 1. Which election, 2024 or 2026? 2. What is the renewal term? 3. What entities, if any, will receive off-the-top revenue? And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention. If there are no questions for me now, please welcome Tampa Mayor Jane Castor, followed by Plant City Mayor Nate Kilton, and then by Temple Terrace Mayor Andy Ross. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It is a pleasure to stand before you today to talk about the significance of the CIT as it applies to not only the county, but the three cities within that area. At the City of Tampa, we do a community survey every year, and the issues that are the most important to our residents and business owners are transportation, public safety, and parks and recreation. So, I want to talk about some of the needs that we have in those areas, and then also talk about how we have been good stewards of the CIT funding in the past, and then how that will be utilized in the future. And I also want to just underscore the fact that these, what I'm going to discuss are needs and not wants for our community. So first, talking about transportation. We gauge the condition of our roadways, just like the county does. We have a listing of each of the roadways in our city, and over 40% of those are in the category of poor condition. And so, we have also 1,300 miles of sidewalk gaps within the City of Tampa. So, our proposal for future CIT funding is to increase our paving, additional sidewalks, and also increase our safety, both on the roadways for our drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists. We have over $100 billion in need in the transportation area. And that's not talking about anything mass transit. That's just addressing the issues that I talked about above. We have a plan for each of these areas, long-range. Our moves plan addresses mobility and transportation for our city, and it also, that stands for mobility, opportunity, vision, equity, and safety. And again, these dollars would be used for pavement preservation, sidewalks, trails, and bicycle lanes, crossings, safety crossings, and to address some of the congestion that we see increasing each and every day on our roadways. Next, a subject near and dear to my heart, public safety. This is something that is incredibly important to the success, not only of our city, but our entire region. And as you all know, we are serving a growing population with outdated equipment each and every day. We are looking at improving our technology so that we don't have to add personnel to the ranks that our firefighters, paramedics, and police officers will be able to work more efficiently with technological solutions, vehicles, and rebuilding and repairing our fire stations. And I'll get a little more into that as well. We're looking to decrease our response times and all calls for service, and also, again, improving the safety for our community. New vehicles and fleet modernization, capitalizing on evidence-based technology, which all of our public safety groups do very well here in Hillsborough County, and then increased transparency, which specifically focuses on law enforcement and the relationship and collaboration between our police officers and our community. Our public safety vehicles, that need is over $1 billion for police and fire rescue vehicles. Over the next 30 years, both our police and fire fleets are outdated. We have a goal of replacing our police cars every seven years. Our best track is 10 years, and we have vehicles that are 12 or 13 years old at the police department. Police headquarters, we have to find a new police headquarters for the City of Tampa, doing renovations on our fire stations and also on our training facilities, both for law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics. Looking at our parks and recreation, again, the issues most important to the City of Tampa are transportation, public safety, and parks and recreation. We have a long-term plan to address our parks and recreation issues that we have not only in maintenance, but in new green space and tree canopy as well. We have growing maintenance backlogs, as I know the county has as well, so we are proposing to make our parks more accessible, having many more parks that are ADA compliant, addressing our deferred maintenance, leveraging those sustainability and resiliency efforts, like placing solar on our parks facilities. And also, we have a master plan of over $750 million just to look at those deferred maintenance needs, which include facility maintenance, forestry, ensuring that our trees are trimmed appropriately, swimming pools, splash pads, again, accessibility, and tree canopy and maintenance. We were known as having the best tree canopy in the world at one point, but with development and taking that, some of those trees out, we have reduced our tree canopy by 8%. So those are the areas that we are looking to continue to support with the continuation of the CIT. What I want to share now is, I talked about being a good steward of the community tax dollars. So, in the past, with the current CIT, what we have spent our funding on, 44% has been spent on parks, 36% on public safety, 13% on transportation, and 7% on stormwater management. Going into the future, we are looking at 32% in transportation, and again, that doesn't address the address the mass transit needs that we have. 45% in public safety and 23% in parks and recreation, and no funding in the stormwater area because we have an assessment that we've been able to deal with a lot of those larger projects. So that's, those are the needs for the city of Tampa. Again, not wants. It is, I can't tell you how important it is that we continue this CIT so that our city is able to address the needs of our growing community, and that we will be able to grow to the potential that we all know that we can. Thank you. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Mayor Castor. Next up will be Mayor Kilton, Mayor of Plant City.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Great to be with you today. And I just kind of want to echo a little bit of what Mayor Castor had said, and I think of Plant City in much the same way that she mentioned. I think of it as a four-legged stool of four priorities. First and foremost, it's economic stewardship, because if you don't get that right, then you can't take care of the rest of it. And she mentioned public safety, that's priority number one, nobody else can do that except our municipalities. Then we have our infrastructure and our quality of life, parks and recreation. And those are the same approaches that we take. In Plant City, we've used these monies and touched all those areas over the years. Our city hall, part of that was funded by the CIT tax. Our police station, part of that was funded by the CIT. We spent a lot of money in parks and recreation. And about 48 weekends out of the year, our parks and recreation facilities are programmed. Okay, and that's people not just from Plant City, they're coming from East County, they're coming all over from Hillsborough. We're right there by county line, folks from Polk County. So I think a funding source like this, where 20% or more of it is coming from visitors, is a reasonable way to look at it as well. It's not, it's not taken care of just by those within the county lines. It's those that are also using some of these facilities that the monies are going to pay for. One of the things that we've also done previously was using some of the money for repairs and maintenance and resurfacing on roads. But about five years ago, we made the decision in Plant City, something that we're very proud of, to increase our ad valorem tax by 1 mil. And we used that 1 mil dedicated 100% to road resurfacing and sidewalks. And we took a 60-year cycle of repairs and pared that down to 15 years. And we've been in that on a five-year cycle now. So, a lot of the monies that we could potentially receive from the CIT, if it goes toward infrastructure, would be to capacity in those areas, because we've got the rest of it covered. And while it's a small percentage of the overall tax that's taken in, a little over 2%, it's very meaningful to Plant City, based on the areas that I mentioned previously. And we don't have that many levers that we can pull in Plant City that impact revenue, right? Ad valorem is one of them, and that's as high as I want to see it at the current time, because I think that's fair to our citizens. And because we've also done a great job with economic development, we have a very diverse tax base that's able to address the needs, not just with residential, but with commercial avenues as well. And I like to say in Plant City that I would challenge you to find a jurisdiction in the state of Florida that's a better steward than we are. We squeeze a nickel so hard that we get a dime. So, we take very seriously the expense side of where we are, and I think we do a phenomenal job with the resources that we have. But again, there's, there are, there are just a few options and avenues that we have, and this is a critical funding source for us. Going forward, if you consider this, I would just ask that it looks, you know, somewhat similar to what it does currently from our perspective, right? We want the apportionments to be fair and reasonable. I know there might be some restrictions, we've heard from legislature on the timeframe or the window, but, you know, a longer timeframe and a longer runway gives the flexibility to bond if you need to or you want to. And I don't know that we would do that necessarily in Plant City, because we're very debt-averse. We do have some CIT bonds that are still out there for city hall, but if something came up that we thought was a priority, we'd want to have the flexibility to be able to bond these revenues if we needed to for those projects. So, from, you know, can't speak on behalf of all my Commissioners today, because I don't know what the final product's going to look like, but I'll tell you for me personally, and as a citizen, I think it's a very reasonable approach to extend this because of what it's done for our community and what I know we're going to use it for in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kilton. Next up will be Mayor Ross from Temple Terrace.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for including us in this discussion. CIT is very important to all of us, and just because we are the smallest city in the county does not mean that it's less important, it's just a question of scale. And so, in fact, in some fashion, perhaps CIT may be even more important to us because of our size. And as an example of that, I would say that almost all of our police cars, our fire apparatus, our ambulances are funded by CIT. I don't think we use any operating expenses of our own for that. So, that's just number one. As you know, a fire, just a single piece of fire equipment costs a fortune. And it's particularly critical in the northeast part of the county where we are, because mutual aid is very robust up there. Which really leads me to, into my next point that I'd like to make. I could, I could tell you all about projects that we've spent, and what we've spent it on, but you already know that. What I tell our citizens in Temple Terrace is that everything touches everything else. And what happens in the downtown Tampa area impacts, the downstream economic impact to Temple Terrace. And what happens along the waterfront, the events that happen at the stadium, all those things have a downstream economic impact that touches all of us. And what I think is, one of the strengths of the CIT model of funding is, not that I'm a tax-and-spend person, it's not that, I'm kind of tax-adverse, actually. However, this provides us with a mechanism of capturing tax revenue regionally, or at least through the county. And most of the things that the various governments spend this on are regional assets. If we buy a fire truck, we use that fire truck to run calls in unincorporated and vice versa when we're busy or when they're busy. When we have a Taylor Swift concert at the stadium, which is an excellent facility, that revenue floats all boats. That impacts all four governments here, that doesn't just stay in Tampa Sports Authority, that's regional impact. The cruise industry, Temple Terrace is not paid in to build any cruise docks, but that cruise industry, when one of those ships come in, people don't realize what those people buy here. That, you know what that impact is to florists? I mean, it has connections that we don't think of. And so, I really think that the CIT, that in our community, in Florida, sales tax revenue works better in some ways than other tax forms. So I'm not a tax-hungry person, but this enables us, and in our city, we only have a couple of funding streams that enable us to do this. We get a little bit from bed tax and from gas tax, but the biggest chunk we get is from CIT. And this enables us to tap into revenue that people that don't live in Hillsborough County, when they come to see Taylor Swift and all the stuff they buy here, we get some of that revenue. And unless they buy a home in Temple Terrace, we don't get any of that. And so, these things that we build, that we spend money on from CIT are regional assets. And so, I think this is just a good funding stream. In some ways, I wish we could lower property taxes and rely more on this, which I know is not possible, but I think in our environment, this is a good funding scheme for us. It might not be everywhere, but for here, I think it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I want to thank all three mayors and the county administrator for their well-thought-out and detailed presentations. We'll now go into Board discussion. Are there any comments or questions from Board members? Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'll kickstart this. So, I want to thank the mayors for being here too as well. It shows how important this funding source is. And I think it's first important to start with what this is not. This is not something similar to what we've faced on the last set of ballots with the sales tax. This is, this is something that's so critical for the unincorporated and incorporated parts of Hillsborough County. Now, our fire chief, is the fire chief here? Could you come up to the front real quick? I think just real briefly too, Chief, thanks for being here. The public safety component is really, really important to me. Obviously, I represent East and South County, and we have an extreme shortfall in fire stations, and this CIT is critical for that. Chief, would you mind just giving just a really quick, brief overview of the importance of this and what it means to y'all?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think over the past few years, my predecessor, Chief Jones, came in front of the Board many times, stating the need to build stations, to have more response apparatus. Where currently, our call volume, as you saw on the slide earlier, it's increased dramatically with the population. We're not keeping up with the population, we're behind, you mentioned South County. Hillsborough County is behind 28 stations right now. We all know that we're not going to build 28 stations tomorrow. So there's other things that we got in place, there's other solutions we're looking at, but all that involves capital projects, whether it's building stations, purchasing apparatuses. That'll help the county to give us the ability, give our firefighters the ability to serve the community. And without the CIT, we're going to have a lot of challenges, more challenges than we already have.
Well, good. I just, thank you for being here today. I just wanted to touch on the public safety component, because for the public's purposes, to understand this tax and Mayor Ross, I'm not a tax guy either, but this is not an increase in tax, this is a renewal of an existing tax. This isn't what the school board is attempting to do this time around, which I think does throw a wrench in some things to have two taxes on there. It's what we have to talk about here as a Board. Mr. Hordell, are you still here? Could I have you real quick? So, as far as the language goes, I know we haven't really proposed that, but this is a lot different than 1996, right? We're in a situation here where we're renewing and not bringing a new tax. The language, and just your thoughts, or Ms. Wise, your thoughts on how we would frame this on the ballot is, you know, I would like to see it say words like renew or continue, just so that people that may be stumbling into a voting booth, that aren't fully educated on this, have an idea of what this is.
So I'll start. Their ballot language is limited to 75 words, so we're going to have to work within that. And then we have to work, of course, within the, when the expiration of the tax is at the end of November 26th, and when the new tax starts, the law changed. So we don't have the words right at this moment, but I think this is your point, this is a continuation of a tax that we already have now, that people are currently paying and have been paying, and then that same amount would continue into the future. But exactly the wording, we haven't worked on that just yet.
Yeah. All I would add would be that that's one of the things we want to hear from you all at this workshop, what your thoughts are as to what are the priority issues that we need to highlight in the ballot language. We're very fortunate to have capable county attorney, capable assistant county attorney in Sam Hamilton, who can craft whatever it is the Board determines to be your priority. So, yes, at this point, I think it is useful for us to hear some of the thoughts that you have about the priorities. We've outlined those four categories, and the language and statute is broad enough to cover just about anything that you may want to do. Ultimately, as the county administrator said, helping the public understand what we're doing with the renewal and what is going to go toward is essential.
Yeah, and I'd be scared to leave something out. We've, I want to be very careful, I know we've already dealt with these issues that have gone all the way up to the Supreme Court on being specific and not ambiguous on language. And, for example, I saw the 1996 language has things like schools in there. You know, this time around, the schools, you know, obviously, I don't think capital improvements are too important to them, because they're putting something else on the ballot for operating. So, I think, I guess my question is, so, will we have to be specific on exactly everything that we're spending money on in this particular, in the language? And if we leave something out, is, you know, I guess that's my question, is how specific compared to, the 1996 language to me is very specific. It states everything that we're going to be spending the money on. Will we have to do that exactly again?
So I would defer to the county attorney and Sam Hamilton if they care to address that specific issue.
So, Commissioner, I'll take a stab. Certainly, we would recommend, once we've heard from the Board, to make sure, you know, make sure that the language is broad enough to cover anything that you might want. I think what Greg was alluding to is, you also have the possibility of narrowing it if that was something the Board wanted to do. But once we hear from the Board and so forth, and hear how you want to direct us to draft it, we'll make sure that it's giving you the options that you're seeking.
Yeah, and obviously, I'm a fan of narrowing it. You know, there's, I've been beating this drum since I got elected, is that, you know, roads and infrastructure and public safety, that's what this money should be spent on. You know, and bonding things out, I think, is a dangerous thing as well in some cases. I'm a pay-as-you-go guy, but I do understand in some situations that's required. Everybody loves cutting ribbons, I like cutting ribbons too. We like to show accomplishments, but at the same time, we have to be physically responsible here when it comes to the CIT, and especially in order to get this passed, because I think the cities, this will do well in the cities, but I think where this is going to win or lose will probably be in the unincorporated part of Hillsborough County. And I think we just have to be very clear and concise with the language on what these funds are going to be spent on, and the fact that this is not a new tax, like the school board is doing, this is a renewal of a tax that's just so critical to our incorporated cities and unincorporated. Mr. Hordell, on the, you could just hang out up here, I've just got a few more. On the growth, you'd mentioned the growth and the challenges with the growth. And, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention where that future growth is going to take place, and your estimation, where is that growth going to take place?
More than likely, it's going to take place in South and East County, because the rest of the county, while it does have some areas that are somewhat undeveloped, the vast majority of land for development is in South and East County.
Yeah, and what do you think, if this was not renewed, would that be pretty devastating to East and South County as far as transportation and roads?
Well, yes. When you consider that we have invested 50% of the county CIT proceeds into transportation, and yet we still lag in being able to provide the number of road miles that we need to provide for good transportation network. Without this funding source, I've got to say, it would be, it's, it would critically hamper our ability to widen roads, to repave roads, to install sidewalks. All of the things that our citizens take for granted would essentially become much, much harder, and we'd have many more difficult conversations during budget, because there's not enough revenue to do the infrastructure without the CIT. Just being very straightforward and honest with you.
Yeah. And I think, Ms. Wise, what you said earlier, I think is great to contrast it, how it's complicated as far as the capital improvement portion, but it's not complicated for the public as far as capital improvements. That's stuff they see, that's stuff they see every day. So, as far as the timeline, as far, you know, 30 years to me was, it's a wild time to approve some type of tax, to me. What are pros and cons, you think, Greg, on the 10 years versus 15, 20? If you could just, for the public purposes, give us, and for the Board's purposes, what are the pros and cons with reducing the time?
The Reader's Digest version is that with 10 years, it becomes fairly difficult to bond something if, you know, you don't have a sustainable revenue stream for a long period of time. 20, 30 years, yes, you could bond, and I will defer to our excellent financial expert, county administrator, Bondi Wise, on more detail, but that's the snapshot version. The longer you go out, the easier it is to bond to bigger projects. So if you want to stick closer to a pay-go scheme, then 10 years is fine, 15 years is fine, really, the entire timeline would be fine if that's the Board's policy preference. But major projects that are 20, 40, 200 million, those typically end up needing to be bonded.
Yeah, that is the issue I have with the 10 years. I like, the 10 years sounds good to me, but at the same time, if we are bonding portions, I do see that challenge, and I'd love to hear some of my fellow Board members' comments specifically on that, on the timeline, if this is approved. But, but great. So that's pretty much what I have for now. You know, I think, just for my two cents, I think this ballot is probably the one to put this on. And my only hesitation, and I'd love to hear Board members too on this, my only hesitation is if there's another tax on there as well. So that, to me, is really the only challenge on there. But the public understanding, I guess, the difference between the two, that one of them's renewal, one of them's a brand-new tax. So, thank you for being here, thank you everyone for being here, and I'll defer and listen to my fellow colleagues. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wohlstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hordell, and it might be possibly Mr. Brickie that I'll have some questions for. I believe that you have some information that I've been requesting leading up to this. I'm glad that we have the question of the school board finished. I don't believe that we've covered the sports authority, that was also having an option of removing. I particularly found, in 1996, you know, I was, I was 12 years old, so I didn't vote on this tax, but I do find a language like "community stadium" to be deceiving. It's not really very accessible. It's not really very accessible to the community. In that tax, while this was one paragraph, deep in the language of the actual referendum, though, were other requirements that oftentimes don't get read beyond this one paragraph. Is that correct? Requirements that go along. Specifically, when it comes to the sports authority contract, this was a sales tax meant to subsidize things with sales tax funds, like was accurately pointed out by Mayor Kilton, is oftentimes a decent percentage of people that do not live within the jurisdiction. So you're getting your infrastructure subsidized from monies from people that don't even live here. They get the shared benefit from traveling, and we get the shared benefit of not having to pay it through our property taxes. Is that fair?
Fair.
Okay. In the operating agreement of the sports authority, can you elaborate on what was buried? And this is where the devil's in the details, where we have a paragraph that we're agreeing to convince people to vote, which is, you brought up all for transportation tax. It was deemed that they essentially manipulated voters into thinking they were going to vote on something, which I want to make sure that when we get into these details, we're, like you, Commissioner Owen, said, very specific about what we're going to spend the funds on. Did this tax result in us only spending sales tax after we got it approved at the ballot box?
The referendum included the construction of the stadium, and that's a capital item, and it was included in the interlocal agreement among those who had distributions. There was a separate interlocal agreement regarding the operation of the stadium. And within that, there was provisions for both the county and the city to provide operating funds.
And those operating funds, did we meet those obligations? And if we didn't, how were those operating funds paid for?
The operating funds are paid, the county funds 2/3 of the operating deficit for the TSA, and the city pays 1/3. The county has paid its 2/3 from its countywide general funds.
And just for the general public, what are typically, what are our general funds that paid for any potential operating deficits? And if there were deficits, what was that amount?
Approximately 70% of the countywide general fund is property taxes. About 25, about 20% is state shared revenues, 5% some various things. And over the period of the operated agreement, the county has provided about $20 to $25 million of operating funds to fund that 2/3 subsidy of the deficit.
So in other words, because of the details that were in there, we had the average Joe taxpayer, which includes myself, essentially subsidizing in operations of a facility that resulted in one small entity becoming worth multi-billion dollars with our property taxes.
Well, it was two separate interlocal agreements. The operating agreement was separate from the interlocal agreement that included the capital funds.
And I think that that's extremely important when, I think that, I think that, for many of these reasons, 30 years, 20 years is off the table because we're 15, 20 years behind in infrastructure improvements because this board decided to bond out, basically, the last 20 years of the tax, which handcuffed us new commissioners from having, we've had a little bit of it, but previous years. And that's where Commissioner Owen, I think that you were struggling to get your constituent sidewalks prioritized that just came up, even though you have substantially the largest amount of backlog. I think the last I checked, almost summed it back to 2010. And that's because there were no pay-go monies that were available when those unexpected needs were coming up. Administrator Wise, how many votes does it take from this board to put that referendum up?
It's just a simple majority.
Simple majority vote? I think that, I would like to understand, when we say bond, the general public doesn't understand, we don't operate in the terms of bonds. That's, we're taking out a loan.
It is a financial term for a loan.
It's, does it have interest?
It does, sir.
Okay. What's the total amount of interest that we paid on the money that was bonded about 20 years ago?
Over that period, interest and issuance costs are about $120, $130 million.
Which is another huge drawback if we're going to talk about allowing, again, what we just experienced, is to allow for bonding of major amounts of money that result in huge sums of interest, which I don't believe on these total numbers. Is the interest represented in these total numbers that were provided on page 6, on the expenditures of all agencies?
That is, that graph is only the expenditures on the actual projects.
Right. So it doesn't represent, then, the amount of interest that we paid on top of it? Or is it dispersed throughout each project, and we just can't see that amount?
The interest is not dispersed in those projects. The principal would be, because the principal is what funded, in part, those projects.
Okay. So these projects actually cost the taxpayers considerably more. We just don't know. We just know that it's a total sum amount of about $115 to $120 million.
That's correct. For the county, that is our issuance and interest costs.
Okay. I think that, I think that anything beyond a 10 years, Commissioner Owen, is a nonstarter, especially since we're at the risk of the very good state bill that is being heard, I think, today, that might limit us anyways. And if we begin an OPAGA study that doesn't reflect that, I believe it goes into effect June or July the 1st of 2024. So then we would be handcuffed off the top and might waste a lot of money and time of the taxpayers, which might result in their municipalities having to dangerously consider raising their property taxes. I believe that 10 years is a nonstarter for many of those reasons. That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
I thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. So just to take a step back for a minute to sort of the beginning of the conversation, it seems like actually there's widespread agreement on the need for this tax to be reauthorized, particularly for public safety needs and for transportation needs that include safety and congestion relief and infrastructure. Public safety, I think, certainly covers fire rescue and law enforcement needs. We heard from the fire chief about the need for new stations. I know the city has the same, the city of Tampa has the same pressures. I know that we also have a lot of needs in our court system where we're responsible for providing the facilities in which the system is going to operate. And it sounds to me like we all tend to agree on all that. I also think, although it's going to bear a little discussion, that it's more likely than not that if we do place this on the ballot, we're going to want to do it this year because we're going to have higher turnout in a presidential year. And I would also say that it's never, it's never a good time to ask for money from the taxpayer, but we have certain economic indicators that would tell us that the economy is fairly strong right now, and we're expecting, based on what the Fed has said, that there should be two interest rate cuts this year. It might be an environment where people are willing to consider this. As to what I think are the two major things that we're going to have to decide, the renewal term and who are the entities to receive money off the top. I hear what Commissioner Wustel is saying, and I think that those concerns about being beyond the 10-year window are legitimate. And certainly, there is a cost to bonding. But there are reasons that, beyond just bonding capability, that a 30-year term might make sense in terms of the flexibility and the planning horizon that it gives to the local government, and also the fact that we've seen how much inflation and price increases and the cost of labor and the cost of raw materials have gone up. And there really might be an argument to be made that more money can be saved by doing things earlier rather than later. On the other hand, we might, that decision may be taken away from us by the legislature, and that's likely to be decided very soon. So between that and, you know, whatever the board's pleasure, we can move forward on this, and the term of the thing really is probably the last thing that we have to decide before we send it off to OPAGA. If the votes are there, to only do 10 years, so be it, but it may be that on further analysis, we want to give ourselves a little more flexibility. In terms of who comes off the top, that, I think, really is the issue that we have to flesh out among ourselves. Is the school board and the sports authority going to be included in the way that they were in the 1996 referendum or not? And I think that there's, you know, there's arguments in favor and against. Certainly, our situation related to the school board is complicated by the fact that they might have a competing item on the ballot that actually will go for a shorter term, my understanding is, than what we're considering. So to the degree that we want to take that into account, that seems to me to be the biggest question in front of us. And then secondarily, the question as related to the stadiums. You know, I am open to their being included, but I am also on that, willing to listen to what other board members have to say about it. I just want to close by saying that, getting back to the importance of the tax generally, this morning at the TPO meeting, Commissioner Kemp was talking about the safety issues that we face year after year after year when we are passing our transportation improvement program. And every year, including this year, our pedestrian and bicycle fatalities are among the highest in the nation. And I was going to chime in this morning into the discussion, but the reason I decided not to is because we have it year after year after year, but without the resources to do anything about it, we find ourselves very limited. Our needs are much, much more than our resources. This is the opportunity, this is the opportunity to put a real down payment on these safety problems that we have been having, and also on the congestion that just gets worse and worse the longer it remains unaddressed. So for those reasons, I think there's broad consensus that we should move forward. And like I said, I think those remaining questions, we can decide over the next six to eight weeks as the staff progresses.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. First, I'd just like to thank the municipalities for coming and sharing your thoughts, and also, all three of you all said the same thing, the need, being good stewards of the funding that you all have already received. So my take on this is to, I'd support a 20-year. That'd be this year that we put it on the ballot. So for us, the language, we'll leave that up to our county attorney to bring us some back after our meeting in April. When we think of a renewal, it's just to renew the tax that is already in existing. And we can look at the data right now, how the improvements have been throughout our region, the various municipality, and including our county. When we think of the parks and wrecks, that's where all the kids go in the afternoons. We need to build more. They're looking for places to go. When we talk about public safety and getting better equipment to run, we've already did this with the CIT funding earlier. Now we're just renewing the tax to continue it. Let's not beat it up that we don't want people to support this. We want our municipality to help us get this passed so that we can continue to see some of the economic impacts in our various communities as well. When we speak of our sports authority, okay, we had Taylor Swift here for three days, Beyonce. We had the truck mania, whatever. Okay, we all saw Usher Sunday night. Why not have Usher here live? I mean, the stadium is making an economic impact. It involves our tourist dollars. You know, how are we going to pay for this? This is what this is all about now. And we're sitting here saying, okay, well, maybe not. What is the language? Okay? Well, I see in support of broader language. So we don't leave anything out that we wish we had included it in, and then now it's too late. That is my position. And, you know, when you say the revenue tax, okay, is another tax. In some of the municipalities, it is helped where they could not increase another tax on some of the individuals in those communities. So, you know, we have a lot to be thankful for with this 30-year tax on the CIT. I was a county employee when it was voted on back in the day. Okay, but look at it now, 30 years later. What have we accomplished? Quite a bit. What have we improved throughout? We have a nice renovated stadium. Okay, that's the stadium the county owned. The Vennix State, that's county-owned. We have to invest in what we own. It's no more than, hey, if you own a home and the leak is roofing, it's leaking, or you need to buy a refrigerator, what do you do? You don't pass it on to someone else. You don't tell your children, oh, you got, but you might say, oh, you need to help mom and dad get a new refrigerator, or help mom and dad get a new roof on the house. So when we look at those things, these are things that the county owned, and we need to continue to invest in what we own, and we need to continue to, when people come here in our communities, that we have something to showcase, particularly when it comes to our parks, our stadium. We all are happy when it comes to the Super Bowl. We want a nice stadium and all. I support the renovations of the stadium. I go out there. It is very nice. It's a state of the art. It is a state of the art. So I'm going to support a 20-year right now for this, to put it on the ballot this year. This is the year that we should get this done. As the young folks say, now's the time, and the time's now, is to get it done. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Kemp?
And I'd also like to thank all the representatives of each of the communities, the mayors, too, for talking about their needs and their support for this. I think it's clear, I know from the county's perspective, that, I mean, it's critical, desperate. I've said that from this dais a lot of times. And unlike Plant City, which I liked hearing about how you set aside that millage and feel as though you have a program there for meeting your needs, but this would, of course, aid that program. You know, I tried to get a dedicated millage for unincorporated county this year. We have 4.3 mills. I think you all have more near six or more, all three of our cities that we have in Hillsborough County. And we do not have the millage we need for, to support our fire, our transportation system. It is a desperate, desperate need. So I'm very much in support of this. And yes, at this morning's meeting, and I kind of at the TPO, and I have many times focused on this, we got a five-year rundown of fatalities in Hillsborough County, transportation fatalities. And for the last five years, for many of the last five years, for many of the last decade, for anyone who hasn't heard it before, Hillsborough County has been number two in the nation for bicycle, pedestrian, car crash fatalities. And that includes high injury as well, which we shouldn't forget about. It's been a horrid safety issue. We are so behind. And we found out, a little bit of good news, is that it's been climbing over the last five years for car crashes. It, this year, has topped and went down a little. But guess what? That didn't happen for our pedestrian and bicyclists. That is the one figure that's still going up, the fatalities for pedestrians and bicyclists in Hillsborough County, up over 200 again. So I'm, you know, I, we very, very much need to do this investment in... So I'm, you know, I, we very, very much need to do this investment in public safety, in transportation. But as Commissioner Myers pointed out, I would have to be on board with also looking, I mean, it's just important that we have our park facilities, as you said, our access for children out there, for all the other kinds of things that we support. And Commissioner Wostel, I know you said you were 12 during that tax. I was a little bit older than that when we had the last 1996 discussion. And now I, and I was checking my memory on it and may not have it quite right, but there was, you know, it was not passed the first time. And there was debates over the schools and the stadium. And to my memory, and I probably, I know I checked this, there was something I had that was wrong with regards to my memory, but the second time, and it was Commissioner Joe Chalora here, who really fought to have those two combined and put on, because that is what got public support, both of those constituencies, to pass something. And so I think we really have to be thinking about that. 2024 is the year to do it, but we have to keep in mind that because of a new legislative rule, we can only do it once every four years now of major elections. We used to be able to bring it up the next year if it failed. So we have this opportunity. That's why something like a 10-year timeline is really, I think, a very, I mean, again, it's tying our hands and making it so difficult, because if you can only bring it up every four years and you only have 10 years, we're, that would be a serious impairment to us moving forward, the kinds of things that that would ratchet down on local bodies to go forward with something like this. So, you know, I actually would, the more I understand about it, I, you know, I wouldn't have necessarily been this way, but because of the constraints put on us by the state legislature, and we'll have to see about what happens with this, whatever they pass with the tenure. But I'd really be supporting 30 years. And one of the reasons I am there is I did speak, and I was asking staff about bonding. And one of the things that I learned, and maybe Ms. Wise can comment, because I was saying, well, if you, what happens? Can you bond things for 10 years? Can you bond things for 20 years? Can you bond things for 30 years? And if you could just speak to that for a minute.
Certainly, you can bond things for 30 years and probably even 20 years. But anything less than that is a little bit more difficult. I always think about like your own house, right? That's the best equivalent. It's very hard to do, you know, pay all the money upfront for a house. There are some assets that are so large that require some type of mortgage on them. So it really depends on what you're, you know, trying to finance. Whatever we finance, what the bond term has to match the life of the asset. So you can't bond something for 30 years if it's only going to last for 15, for example.
And also, costs would be increased by a shorter bonding period for borrowing. Is that accurate? As if your mortgage interest rates would go up, if that was.
Right. So without getting into a whole finance thing on yield curve structure and what we're facing right now, usually, the longer the term of the bond, the higher the interest rate. We happen to be in a strange interest rate scenario at the moment. But probably some combination of bonding and, you know, pay-as-you-go would, you know, would work as well.
And even what I wouldn't consider large projects in the past, but I know that now, things like Lithia Pine Crest, which we hear about here all the time, and Van Dyke, we were talking about $200 million. Those are no small projects. Would those have to be bonded? Or if, if we didn't do bonding, would, I mean, would we save up the money and pay, wait till we get the whole cost? How, I mean, how would that be financed?
Well, it of course depends on the size of the project. So if you have a $200 million project, you, it would take you several years to save up the dollars. If it's a smaller project, you would just do it on a pay-as-you-go basis.
Right. But the other, and I've heard Commissioner Wostel argue about, well, we could have gotten this done sooner at lower costs. And that's, if you balance the inflationary costs of waiting, and you balance the cost of labor, the cost of materials, what's happening now by not bonding, you know, and balance out against also the higher cost of bonding at shorter bond terms. I mean, I just think, you know, we can't really do the analysis here, but I just want to make the argument, because I think it's, it's important for people to realize that this isn't all just one answer to any of this. But I would support the 2024, knowing that if there are issues with it, we can't put it on again for four more years. I'd support the 30 years for what I just said. And also a broad, I think we need to do a broad list of our possible projects. I think we most likely to mimic what the statute allows, so that we find ourselves in position to do that and follow the state law in terms of what we fund and look for in the future.
All right, thank you. I'm going to jump in here and make a couple of quick comments before we go back around the dais. I do want to point out that this was originally scheduled to go till 3 o'clock. Just a couple of quick comments here and notes that I took. Number one, I think it's paramount that we move forward with renewal this year. It's a critical funding source for our city partners, all of our unfunded needs, particularly with fire rescue and transportation. And the lack of current CIT capacity clearly necessitates reauthorization this year. If this funding source were eliminated, it would have a devastating impact and would place an undue burden on our property tax revenue. I want to point out that while we're focusing mostly this afternoon on the ballot language, there's the ballot language, we have the ordinance, and we also have the interlocal agreement that will all go into this. I just want to keep, make, make sure everyone's mindful of that. I also want to point out that with respect to the ballot language, I'm supportive of removing the school board reference and the community stadium reference that was in the initial 96 ballot language. Commissioner Wostel makes excellent points regarding Ray J. Unquestionably, that was a sweetheart deal. There's no denying that. However, one thing I do want to point out, that eliminating the stadium component does not relieve us from making improvements to Ray J. The existing lease agreement obligates us to maintain Ray J at NFL standards. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. Regarding the duration, I'm not married to any particular term. I do agree that 30 years is too long. Candidly, I didn't realize 15 years was an option. I always thought it was 10, 20, or 30, that that's what we've discussed in the past. Clearly, several counties have utilized a 15-year option, so I wouldn't mind seeing, you know, considering that, maybe 10, 15, 20. But that's generally where I stand right now. And now we'll go back around the queue again. Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Five years is an option. Is that right? I mean, we could do it for five years if we wanted, isn't that right administratively? We've presented 10, 20, and 30, but it's not just 15. We could do five years in line with, I don't know, our CIP, which is a requirement for us to do. And we have a document that demonstrates funding needs, and then we are advertising a tax in line with a document that's also a requirement that has specific items. So it's not like Commissioner Owen and Commissioner Sepeda that we're, we're trying to be unreasonable if we're arguing for 10 years. We could be arguing for five years. Is that correct?
Right. The statute doesn't specifically give 10-year increments. You could do 12 years. I mean, there's no magic to that, right?
Okay. So I'd like to bring us back that our objective is that we seem to have a concurrency, that this would be good to pass for people to subsidize their property taxes and not have to go back at increasing them. And to the disadvantage of the public, Mayor Castor's office sent over a pretty thorough slide. I thought she was going to get to present it, but it clearly articulates some of the 10, 20, and 30-year needs. Some highlights are that if we did the 10-year option according to this slide, which thank you, Mayor Castor, for providing that, it would 100% fund their 10-year cost of their moves initiative, which would manage the trails and bicycle lanes, the multimodals that both Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Kemp advocated for. It would manage their congestion issues over the next 10 years. It would manage their pavement preservation, and it would manage their sidewalks needs for the next 10 years' cost. It would 100% fund that. Additionally, it would almost 100% fund, on top of that, all of their police vehicles and fire rescue vehicles. According to, it's two different spreadsheets that were offered. According to our 10-year totals that the city of Tampa would receive if we removed schools and the Tampa Sports Authority funding off the top, almost fully fund those two critical initiatives that the city of Tampa would no longer have to worry about funding through their property taxes for their citizens. So we're trying to get something that passes. Right now, people are still, and let's not forget that we're going to try and pass another tax while we still have a half a billion dollars of illegally taxed money outstanding to these same people. They have very little reason to trust us for very long terms with their money when we can't even get their money back that was essentially stolen from them in a five-year period. So if we aren't able to bring it down to a level that we can instill trust in the community, then we are risking the danger of us not having four years to be able to bring it back, which would, if we do it this year, it would expire in '26. We would have two years of an extreme lack of funding before we're able to come back for another bite at the apple. So it would be extremely irresponsible and dangerous for us to go anywhere over the shortest terms possible for us to demonstrate and breed trust in the community. That's what this exercise is all about. So anything about, I mean, all of the points that were brought up, and by the way, Commissioner Owen and Sepeda, since we're getting familiar to losing with our majority on votes of four to three against us, the state right now is considering a bill to require a supermajority vote for anybody to increase property taxes, which is outstanding. So it's not like it's going to continue to be an easier and easier effort for boards and councils to accomplish that tax. So anything, again, over a 10-year period, we can demonstrate with the factual proof that was provided from one municipality, our biggest one. My only other question is for County Attorney Beck. The unincorporated area represents a supermajority of the population of Hillsborough County, about 70%.
So, I'm sorry, I'm going to turn that over to Bonnie or Sam. I really, I don't know.
They do.
It's about a million of the million and a half people in the total county, if that helps.
I think the last numbers I checked is they were about 69% of the total population. Can we craft the language that ensures that that percentage is equal in its expenditure? So if Commissioner Owen, who probably, well, other than the countywides, but single member, wants to come and advocate for programs that representing an extremely large amount of the unincorporated, which represents far more than the municipalities, is there a way that we can protect those interests and ensure a proper distribution based on population to those areas?
So this is exactly the kind of information we're looking for from this workshop. We can certainly be prepared to give you a very detailed legal answer. I don't want to wing something as important as that. My initial thought is that there may be a place for that in the interlocals, possibly. But we can, we can certainly, or not the interlocal, I meant the ordinance in terms of how you choose to use your tax funds, but, and I don't know if Sam has a ready answer on this, but, okay. So we'll, but thank you. I mean, that's exactly what we're looking for, and we'll be prepared to give you a very specific answer to that.
Okay. I think that that's extremely important, especially considering the backlogs that reside in the unincorporated area and them representing a supermajority of our population. And for that, I'll yield. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll be brief, and thank you for those comments, Commissioner Wostel. One thing, Mr. Hordell, Mayor, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to clarify, if possible.
Sure. Just please be brief.
I apologize if there was some misunderstanding, but for public safety and transportation, our needs are well over a billion. And in the increments provided by the county, the city, if you took out the stadium and the school system, would get just a little over 500 million. So I apologize. And that doesn't include.
I was referencing the, specifically the slide that says public safety vehicles. I'm pretty sure I did say the word vehicles. So 260 million plus your moves project of 10 years, which is another 338. And that's why I said almost fully funds both, but fully funds the moves, because you would get over a half a billion, and those two would bring you about 560 or so.
Right. And as I stated in my presentation, the needs in each of those areas far exceed a billion dollars.
Well, your 10-year cost, just so we can be clear, public safety vehicles, 10-year cost, 260 million, correct?
Right. But we're talking about facilities, we're talking about technology.
I'm just saying it could fund almost two of the categories you presented, just to give an idea of the general public.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. What I heard is you said it would fund all of the costs in those two areas. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen, please continue.
Greg, and, you know, I think there's a lot of danger, because I've heard, you know, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Kemp, you both alluded to the broad language. And I want to be careful here, because I, I'm not going to agree to anything that the voters don't know what they're voting for. I'm just not going to agree to that. And I think that if we've learned anything over these past four years, that that, that can be a problem to be challenged. Is that not the case in this because of statute, that you can put some super broad language in there? Or I'd like to, maybe that's for Ms. Beck to comment on, because, one, I think it's dangerous to do that just because of what we've learned the last four years. But two, you know, again, I'm going to say it again, I'm not going to support something that the voters, when they go into that voting booth, don't know exactly what they're voting for. So could you allude to that?
Of course, that would absolutely be our intent to match that. And so when we hear from the board of, if you do narrow or put limitations, then certainly we'll make the documents reflect that.
Yeah, well, I guess my question is, what would be an example of broad? I mean, is that something where, I'm trying to understand that, because there weren't specifics stated here today. You know, I just, I don't see how we can put any broad language into, into this referendum. So if you could.
I think broad is referencing what the statute allows, which is a plethora of things. So you could make it extremely broad, or you could narrow it down to, of course, it has to still be allowed by the statute, but you can say, but we're only going to use it for the matters that we deem our most critical needs. And draft it that way, then you're going to be bound by your ordinance language and by the ballot question.
Yeah.
But it would still be legal.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for clearing that up. And, and I, you know, I know the millage rate in the unincorporated was brought up. Again, this is not really the appropriate place for it. But, you know, and I want to keep politics out of this. This is something that I think we all, as a board, need to work collectively on and put the politics aside, because we all agree that this, this is an important renewal. But, but, you know, I'm not going to agree to any raising of the millage rate in the unincorporated part of Hillsborough. You know, the prior majorities have had plenty of opportunities to do that, and they didn't do that, do it then. So with water and electric inflation, I won't agree to that. But this, again, this renewal, I think, is very distinct and very important. And Ms. Wise, the school board has received what, what percentage, just for the public's purposes? I know we touched on it, but.
Right. So on the last referendum, it was 25% right off the top.
25%. And that's a lot. And I'm thinking, you know, I'm not going to agree to the school board getting anything this time around. I think what the chair just stated as to Raymond James is very compelling, that, you know, we have an obligation and duty under, under the lease. So, you know, I'm going to be for then removing those two off the top. And I think there's a real good public safety component for fire stations and everything that we can do with such a huge percentage there. So that's all I have. Thank you, everybody, today for your input.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda.
Yes, I definitely support renewing this and as, agree with Commissioner Hagan and the other commissioners here, that it's a critical funding source for our public safety and transportation and other needs that we have. And originally, I was thinking. And originally, I was thinking of the 10-year term, but after hearing Mr. Hordell speaking about the larger projects would need to, for that reason, you know, I would consider a longer term than the 10-year, but not that much longer. You know, maybe 12 to 15 sounds better. And then also, as Commissioner Owens was mentioning also, taking the school board off for the same reasons as well.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Yes. I know we've been, we've mentioned the school board and the sports authority. I'd just like to ask if they would like to say something, since we're mentioning their name. Either one would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none? I'm good. I just wanted to ask, when you're talking about a person, you want to be able to defend. Thank you.
I'm good, too, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Wostol, and then we're going to wrap things up.
Administrator Wise, my final thing, did we get clarification on my previous question that I would like to see in here, if possible, that in the investment tax, we're able to allocate a small percentage towards workforce housing?
Yes. So I did ask the county attorney's office, and they are doing the research on that. However, the initial reaction is that, yes, it could be used for that purpose. For capital.
The next step, as we move forward in capital, is if we can be as restrictive as I would like to be in terms of it being towards single-family, that is homeownership and not rental-based infrastructure. My reasoning behind that is that I don't want to have what's happening in Pasco, where it looks like a bunch of decent, decently successful developers are going to be possibly subsidized with the Live Local Act on a luxury type of housing that's going to be re-categorized as affordable housing. I want to make sure that if we do this, that we're not subsidizing luxury homes for a high-end developer, that it's going towards actual attainable workforce housing on a small percentage basis. And I believe that that's also something that would breed trust and help us get to the important finish line. And since, give me an idea of what a big project would be, Administrator Hordell, that we would need beyond 15 years. I'll remind you guys that the big projects, the biggest ones, we have enterprise funds, like the water and utilities. We are going to bond those funds as a user fee, and then we're going to bond those for those big projects. So what is, what would be a need to justify going beyond 10 years?
So the larger projects, as Administrator Wise explained earlier, they're difficult to do on a pay-go basis, especially when you have revenue stream that may not cover the cost of that or takes up a predominant amount. The project would take up a predominant amount of that revenue stream. For example, Lithia Pine Crest, we've talked about that at a $200 million level. I would say that that project probably would be worthy of bonding. We have a landfill closure that is going to occur at some point. We're nearing capacity in our landfill. Siting a new landfill, closing the existing one is prohibitively expensive. Those types of projects would be eligible for long-term funding. Water and utility projects, I think the board is very familiar with the projects that you all have done. I know you are, Commissioner, because you sit on Tampa Bay Water. So when you have projects of that large scale, typically, those are funded sooner with bond funds than doing it as a pay-go. Because quite frankly, if it takes you 10 years on a pay-go basis to get the money, your costs may have gone up in that 10 years, so that now you need to wait another two years to be able to capture those additional costs. So there's nothing wrong at all with saying that we're going to focus on pay-go. I think, you know, actually being fiscally conservative, that that's a good direction to go. But there are those projects that would benefit greatly if you wanted to accelerate them. And I would suggest that those are thoughtfully considered and has the board fully apprised of what the benefits would be. So it's not every project. I would never say that we should bond fund every project.
So what happens then if you give another 20-year tax approval? So in 10 years, we're going to get over $1.7 billion. I mean, Lithia Pine Crest was referenced. There are many different funding mechanisms. There's tax increment financing. You can also bond property taxes, which I haven't heard mentioned. We could build Lithia Pine Crest and shift money and revenue sources around. It's where the rubber meets the road, and we have to be creative. But, so Lithia Pine Crest, out of $1.71 billion, I don't know why that would be a good example. I mean, and even then, if we could build Lithia Pine Crest within 10 years, right? And so you could bond it then because the requirement for bonding is that the money sources needs to last as long as it would take for the project, or the value of the project at least? Is that right?
Right. So the, when I was talking about the average life of the project, that average life is much longer than 10 years. So that's, we can go well beyond.
So we could bond Lithia Pine Crest with $1.71 billion. I just, and again, if we, saying anything over 10 years is extremely dangerous, especially with the risk of the new state's bill, that they might limit us and handicap us anyway. So I just, I want to make those points about, and we also don't address the fact on a CIT tax, if you bond the money for a long period of time, like we did last time, but then the economy falls out in the 2008 bubble burst, and it handicaps everybody. And then record-high unexpected inflation occurs because, you know, economists are always right until there's an unexpected anomaly that they didn't expect, and then they justify that. And those are things that we're at the risk of. Not, you, never, Kevin Bricki, you've never done that once in your career. You're exceptional. The point is, is there are extreme risks that aren't being mentioned about the bonding practice. And I, again, would encourage you all to go read the transcripts of the bond council that came before us and convinced this board 20 years or so ago to handicap us and put the cost of how much more expensive everything is now because we didn't have pay-go funds to keep up slowly. So I'll leave it there.
Commissioner Cohen, and then Commissioner Cameron Sepeda.
I just want to clarify with the county administrator or the county attorney, is there any point in this process that it's going to require any more than four votes to do anything? So I would suggest that if there's going to be four votes for things, that's what the administration looked to when you're coming back to us with recommendations for how to move forward. With all due respect, Commissioner Wostol, I'm not sure you have four votes to keep it to 10 years. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. But from what I heard, there's at least an appetite to hear about longer than that. So I think that we're going to hopefully have that discussion over the next eight weeks or so.
Okay. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, and then Commissioner Wostol, and then we're going to next steps.
Yes. So after hearing Mr. Hordell and Commissioner Wostol, I definitely would support the 10-year term.
All right. Commissioner Wostol?
Yeah. I mean, you're welcome to say that, but the best thing to get this across the finish line is that if we have consensus. And if that's going to be your position, that you think you have your fourth vote secured, then the alternative is that we're not going to have consensus, and I'm going to go work aggressively in the community to make sure that we don't pass something that will handicap them and be a huge detriment to them. That's why I'm trying to have open communication. If I was being unreasonable, I'd be advocating for the five years, which I do think is too little. So I just want to make that point before we bring up the 4-3 vote. Okay, Commissioner Cohen? All right.
Okay. Bonnie, I think you've heard some difference of opinions, but you've also heard many common themes here.
Right. So I just wanted to thank you. I'll keep it brief. And what I did hear is that you're interested in moving forward this year. And that was what we really needed to know. Because the other decisions did not need to be made today. You're going to have ample opportunity for this to come before you and to have discussion. So we'll work toward putting something on your agenda for March 6, and this will continue the discussion therein. And if I can just say, you know, being the county's bond person, is that we have a AAA rating, so I don't want anybody leaving here thinking that the county was irresponsible. We have the highest rating that there is afforded to any municipality, and that's, I just wanted you to be comfortable with that. Thank you.
All right. With that, again, I want to thank everyone for coming and attending this afternoon, and we're adjourned.